This meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification. And before we adopt the agenda, I want to mention that the ADA study is going to be dropped. We're not ready to discuss that yet. They just got some bids in today. So that won't be on the agenda. So I'd like to amend the agenda and would not include the ADA study and adopt the rest of the agenda. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose will we live, breathing in justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I would entertain comments from the audience. Item three regarding agenda items. If anyone would like to speak to the board, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. Leave your comments to five minutes. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda, number four. Consent agenda. I would entertain a motion. Well, the consent agenda tonight includes A, approval of January and February vouchers and vouchers payable; B, approval of January 25th and February 8th, 2016, school board meeting minutes; C, approval of February 1st, February 4th, and February 15th, 2016, special school board meeting minutes; and D, approval of revised policy 342.3 gifted and talented programs; and E, approval of revised policy 832/443.6 weapons on school premises. Before we vote on this, would anyone like to pull any of those items? Seeing none, then I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
John, sorry, turn you back up. And opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have our reports, budget update. Doug, what's kind of the latest, what's going on here?
Well, on both revenue and expenditure sides of the budget through December, we're tracking right where we should be, very close to what they have been in the past. The one item that is looking real good right now for us, as I indicated in the memo, is employee benefits because our health claims are running considerably below what they were through December last time. But like I said, the CDC has indicated that the flu season hasn't really started yet. So we need to be a little careful about getting too euphoric, I guess. But there's nothing that I've seen here that causes me any concern for us getting off track.
So we had 29 births last year? Do I remember right, something like that?
I think so, yes.
Where are we running this year?
We'll have to take a survey of the principals. I don't really, I can't really answer.
But that was the big spike, though.
Yes, that was a big spike last year. I'll make a note to look into that.
And for the 2016-2017 budget, we should know what the government has given us, right? Because that's a two-year budget and it's the second year of the cycle?
Oh, yes. We won't necessarily know what our state aid amount is going to be. The DPI does have a preliminary revenue limit worksheet that's available. And I worked through that, but without knowing what the aid is going to be, it's tough to predict what the tax levy will have to be. But we're working on the budget for next year as we speak.
Okay, any other questions on the budget? Seeing none, then we'll move to the district goals, progress report on district goals. Hope there's a little more than what was in our packet.
So as we had talked about at the beginning of the year, what we're trying to do, or what we've done in the buildings, was to build capacity from within. So at this point, we've just completed the PLCAR survey for the fourth, fifth year, fourth year?
Fourth year.
In a row. And then what we're doing is longitudinal analysis of the data to see where they exist. So way back four years ago, and then last year, I presented the PLCO. It was an organizer. It was the six dimensions of professional learning communities. Now we're at the point of breaking each one of those components down into these subcomponents, which are called, what do you call them, the dimensions? The dimensions? And then the subcomponents are, I don't know what we can call them. I'll think of it in a second. But they're the subcomponents, so they're the individual strands. So for example, if one of the categories is supportive structures. So under supportive structures are resource allocations, time during the day, the school schedule, all those little pieces that are underneath there. So this year, what we've been doing, what the principals have been doing, is the first thing we looked at, where we were and where we need to be as far as what data we have. Dr. Hip came in and worked with Lynn Leroy to kind of get her caught up, so to speak, on the data that's been from the middle school. So Lynn could get all that data and see where things were and where to move forward. And then in the October 19th and October 20th, the four schools met in teams to look at the data from the past three years and then look at the plans that they had in place for staff development type activities from last year to see what was successful and what wasn't. Then the entire school district took the survey, February, I guess it was late January, into February. So the whole district took the survey again, and then Dr. Hip just did an analysis. So every single one of those subcomponents has a score from all four years. And she indicated green if it went up, red if it went down, red with an asterisk if it went down significantly, green with an asterisk or two if it went up. Pretty complex grid that I just sent to the principals today. We had just gotten it. So on Thursday, she's actually coming in to meet with all the principals to go over those individual results. The most important part of the plan is that in March, then the principals are going to be bringing one representative from their PLC team in, and Dr. Hip is actually going to be training all of us how to analyze the data, so we don't have to hire her to do it anymore. She's been kind of guiding us through that process. So now it's the systemization piece where we will have the capacity in our own system to give the survey, interpret the survey, and then use it for planning. So the idea is she'll come in in March, train the PLC team member and the principal. The principal and the PLC team member go back to the PLC team at their building. They look at the data as it currently stands, talk about plans and going forward, articulate that plan, and then we will be back to present to the board in May with those finalized plans with the entire teams from each building. And the plans are all around, how do we look at our professional learning culture? Because the idea is, and it's aligned with the board's strategic plan and the strategy there, district culture and climate, what we found was, we couldn't move, first of all, we don't have a standardized test that's longitudinal at this point. So though we're looking at student achievement, it's hard to really get numbers moving one way or the other. Secondly, we're still looking at map assessments. We're still using things along the way, benchmark assessments. And what we're finding is we need to establish an underlying culture to look at that data and talk, talk the talk about data and about student assessments. So the idea is we have to build this culture. We have to understand ourselves as a group, how we work together, how we talk about data, what data should we be talking about, which assessments should we be talking about? And that's what all this work is about. So these teams will put forth a plan by building to say, this is where we are, this is where we want to be, and this is what we need in order to get there. And so the idea of this district, my job is to look at all four buildings, look for commonalities, and then we'll use that for planning into August Institute and next year's staff development days. So as far as the details, each one of the principals could probably talk to you if they wanted to about what went on in those meetings. But really, the meat and potatoes will come after this analysis gets into the hands of the PLC teams.
So the data that you're going to get, will we use next year?
No, we're going to use it, we're going to look at it now and look at our growth over the four years, and then it will result in a plan. Everything we've done so far and the data we have now will then be used to plan for next year.
But how does that, how do those affect, because these are 15, 16 building goals, right?
Right.
How does that affect 15, 16?
So the 15, 16 building goal is that they're going to engage in a process of studying building culture and climate, developing action plans and goals to address culture and climate, and monitor progress.
So I think-
So that's what we're doing, is what we're doing this year is we are actually, we're engaging in a process of looking at our building culture, then they're going to, then the teams are going to develop action plans based upon that. What's strong, what's a challenge, how do we move forward? And then the goals related to each one of those, and then monitor progress that they're having toward those goals. So some of it, some of the adjustments are immediate. For example, in the data last year that we got, some leadership structures we put into place. So some of it, that's what the analysis part is when Chris Hip comes in and works with the principals and the PLC reps. If it's something immediate, then it will be dealt with now. However, for long-range planning, we're going to look at the four years and say, this is where we saw growth, or this is where we saw decline, or where we need to allocate resources. So it's being used for both. Short-term, we're going to look at what we can do, for example, to tweak possibly the last professional growth days or staff development meetings. A lot of the staff meetings were adjusted based upon what people said they needed more information on, or they saw in here, well, we need more time to collaborate on this, that, or the other thing. And then long-range planning, what are we seeing as large gaps? Whether it's data analysis, or assessment development, or supportive structures, I need more time, more resources at these particular points in time.
So all of this sounds medium to high level. Creating culture takes a bit, figure out a process, looking at the data marks that you want. But how does this break down to the student in the classroom? What are you hoping to get out of this for every kid that's sitting in front of a teacher?
Yep.
Whether it's the elementary school core four, all the way up to senior in high school that's about to graduate? How does this break down to affect the kid's education in the classroom?
The idea is that if we sit down, let's say we're all teaching different classes, and we need to sit down and talk about how kids are doing in our classes. The old traditional way, or we may say something, oh, my kids did really poorly on this test. Well, what was wrong with the test? What was wrong with the kids? What did they do? How did your kids do on the test? They're not apples-to-apples tests, because you created yours, I created mine, Quinn created his, we're all all over the place. So the idea with this is that we're going to work as a team to create a singular assessment, use it in the classroom, and then come back together as a team and not say, how did the kids do on this test or not? But actually look at it by strands or learning targets. So let's say it was a quiz on adding whole numbers. We're going to be able to sit down, the three of us, and say, kids were able to or not able to add whole numbers, or these kids were able to add whole numbers and do it in a way that we need to differentiate on the gifted end. These kids were able to meet the mark, so we need to move them on to this next level. These students didn't get to add whole numbers, so what are we going to do next in order to give them that opportunity? The only way that the three of us can actually have those conversations is if we know what data we're looking at, and then how to have that conversation. So that's what this is all aimed at, is getting teachers to see and understand and identify the specific strands and components, and then how to operate within those.
So then by doing that analysis, you feel that that's going to fulfill the vision of an individualized education for each student in the room?
It could. It could result in that, for sure.
And this-
Can I just answer your first question, too? The other part of it is, is culture and climate drives what happens in a school. If you have a teacher that's excited to be in front of that group of kids, the kids reflect the attitude of the teacher. That's why we've been focusing on climate and culture for the last four or five-plus years. It's because it has a direct impact on student achievement. And it was one of those things that, as, you know, when we presented these building goals to the board, we said we were united as an entire team in wanting to focus on each individual building level, to do just exactly what he said. And what Tony's talking about is bringing it into a common language, so that if someone is struggling or having a hard time, there's a team then that can help that person do better. Because if that person struggles, all the kids in that classroom are struggling. And that's why we really emphasize it.
Well, I just want to say, it is happening, but it's in pockets. You know, it's not systematized. For example, the greatest story that I can share is that last year, our kindergarten team had no kids going on to first grade who were in need of interventions. Everyone was at or beyond the proficiency level. And the reason was because they sat down with the PALS assessment, they sat down with benchmark data, and they looked at specific strands and said, okay, well, these kids are struggling with concept of words, so they're going to go over here. These students are looking at, you know, they're struggling with constant recognition, and they would actually break them up according to skills. And it caused a different dialogue than in the past, when you would say, well, this assessment didn't go well, these kids aren't reading well, and you two, how do we move forward? We all know how to intervene, but when we work as a team, we can kind of divide and conquer and start becoming more deliberate about it. So that was the, the idea is to become deliberate about it, understanding what process I'm engaging in and which data I'm talking about.
Well, what I'm excited about, because we've been working on this for a while, in one version or another. So it sounds to me as if we're getting closer to that magic day, that as a board, we're going to see data, and we're going to see the students on a more of a, hopefully steeper projectile of improvement. And that's going to be a good day, because that's when some of this is coming to fruition. So it sounds like we're not that far off, hopefully, from having data to prove all this work from the last couple of years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Good. That's going to be an exciting day.
I would say, quite honestly, the process we're in now with our map data, we have it three times a year, and then PALS is three times a year. We have big cycles of this happening, where we kind of take a break and look at it. The idea is to make the smaller ones, so that every week, we're meeting as a great level team, and we know what data to look at. We just have to pick out what we need and talk about it. And that's where this is, that's where we're getting to those subcomponent pieces. So it's not just a, you know, very formalized outside of the classroom, but instead it becomes a kind of a regular routine. That's the idea.
You know, without standardized testing and without a report card, how are we going to be graded? Or how do we know what to look at, or how we know if our kids are learning?
Yep. The teachers have been working last year was the development of common assessments. So they did, they looked at the standards, and then they developed learning targets to the manageable chunks. And then they designed assessments to align that, or found assessments. So they didn't design it, we found it in a curriculum that we have. So the idea is what we're talking about, those smaller discussions are exactly what you're getting at. We can't wait for the standardized test to come and check for it, even if it is during the school year. So that's what we're saying, is let's say all of our students this year are focusing on, you know, like I said, adding whole numbers is going to be our big thing. So they go through all these activities where they're manipulating things, and maybe they're moving things around, and then they might write numbers out to add whole numbers, then all of a sudden we have an assessment of that. So three of us sit down and we say, the learning target was, I can add whole numbers. Who could add whole numbers? Who couldn't add whole numbers? Why and why not? And what are we going to do with those students? And that's, that's how we're assessing it locally. So the actual stuff we use in the classroom. And it doesn't necessarily have to be a test. But if I make an observation that every time I have Tony sit down and he can't move three marbles and five marbles and then tell me that there are eight, that's a discussion that I'm going to have with my team and say, it's not, it's not that Tony can't write five plus three equals eight, he obviously memorized that, but he doesn't understand the concept, because he can't put five and three together in groups. And so you may say, oh, I've got two kids that are like that, too. And Stephanie may say, I have two kids that are like that. So now we have, we know that we can maybe put those kids together and really focus on concept. Whereas students who are getting the concept but maybe not getting the writing, we can group them that way. So you're targeting, you're targeting rather than kind of blanket, blanket teaching. You can start personalizing, you know, those lessons, or getting very specific as to what the students' needs are.
I think, to add on to his question, how does the board know? I think you're describing what's happening in the classrooms and at the building levels. But how does the board know we're improving? What measures should the board be looking at? How you, usually goals are SMART, there's some sort of measurable, specific, time-oriented kinds of data involved in SMART goals. So how does the board know we're improving? And what data should we be looking at?
The data you should be looking at would be our standardized test data, which we don't have, unfortunately, because the state's changing it again. I mean, that's really the ultimate measure, or the report cards, which we can't have this year. So I think in lieu of that, that's why we went with the culture piece, and we're saying, we have to build our own systems in place for our own monitoring, and this is a perfect time to do that. I don't know that, you know, for, as far as the goals are concerned, I don't know if you're getting at that these aren't goals, or they, I mean, we presented them earlier. They are goals, and they are very specific. We're looking at specific components of the learning community, so that we can create a system that people can look at data in particular. And so that's, we took advantage of the fact that there isn't a report card, or there aren't standardized tests, kind of pulling us away from that, to look at our culture and move that forward. So the idea is that eventually, it will end up with better results. That's the whole idea, is that whether it's standardized test scores, or eventually map scores, or whatever that may be, we're going to see better results, because teachers are working together to target those interventions. It will ultimately impact those. But for us as building administrators and as a district, we need to somehow quantify our culture to figure out if in fact we're moving it. And the preliminary numbers that we have show, show growth longitudinally across each one of the subcategories that we have. So people are feeling as though they have more contribution to the leadership and the vision. People are feeling as though they're more engaged with each other, they're sharing personal practice, all those important six components that are there. So the next piece is now let's plug in the data that we want to focus on, and then use that culture to address the instruction.
It's kind of a catch-22 in a way for me, that, you know, we're, the conditions that you're creating to change the culture, those conditions, aren't the goal, in a way. The impact on the classroom is the goal. The impact on learning is the result of what we're trying to do. So I understand the challenge of changing assessments, but I still think the board really needs to get to that point, where we're looking at some student performance data, whatever that might be. Or if you have some measures of the conditions in this district that are changing across the district, that's stuff we could look at. We could look at those assessments that you're doing and see, yeah, this is really changing. Because we should understand one thing, that it is what happens in the classroom is the only thing that really matters here. It's what happens in the classroom. So moving to that point where we're looking at more data is going to be helpful.
Yeah, these are, these are building goals. These are not board goals. So these are what the buildings are specifically looking to do as far as their culture is concerned.
Well, that's my question. What are the board's goals, then?
I don't know.
Yeah, right.
It's for the board to decide.
Sorry, that's the question. Jonathan, what are you going to say?
My, to your point about the data, if I understand it correctly, that's what you're working to create. You're trying to create a culture for a way to determine how we're doing longitudinally. And they're working on creating that. So he can't answer that now, what we're going to have six months from now, because they're in the process of working on it. They just got the information from Dr. Hip. They just got the information from Dr. Hip. They're going to review it with the principals.
Yeah, I agree.
And then they're going to work from there.
Right.
So I think he's already said that he's, they're working towards what you're looking for. It's going to just take some time to get there, so that we know what we're doing across the building.
Right. So we'll probably at some point, to add on to that, then, a data retreat, to understand, when you say data, what are we talking, that's a very broad term, and it's very confusing. Are we talking about culture and climate data that shows the conditions in the district and how teachers are working together or not? Or do they feel heard and listened to? And do they have common planning time? And all that good stuff, that's data. The other data is, how are our kids performing? You know, that's good. You could have data on what's happening in the classroom, for example, where of someone whose job was to go pop into classrooms and track how much engagement is going on. I mean, there's all kinds of ways to get to data. So I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, this, this data that was produced, it is not going to be shared with the board. Because this was not, this was sold to the staff as it was not going to be shared with the board. It was for principals and the staff to work with. Because if you, without an in-depth analysis or understanding what those specific numbers are, then it could lead to, I would not feel, I would not feel ethical in bringing to the board, because we did tell teachers that it was for feedback for their principals and for their teams. But the idea is that we bring to the board the plans that come as a result of that.
At the end of the year.
So if we identify, for example, a gap, and one of the gaps we can already see is that teachers are saying, we don't have enough, right now, we don't sit with our colleagues enough and talk about specific student assessments. Great, that's important data, so we know now that when we plan staff development next year, when we look at common planning time, we need to identify which assessments, identify which data is meaningful, and work with teachers to teach them how to work with that data. So that's really, you know, because the intricate little numbers, I mean, we've been studying for this for four years, and I still have to call Chris and say, I don't understand what this number means, can you, you know, tell me what it is? And so that's why we told the staff, just fill out the survey, the numbers are safe. We want you to be honest, we need to know what the culture is. And that was kind of the whole idea, was we were trying to keep it very honest and specific to the building. And that's why the results weren't shared. But we do look forward to sharing the goals that come out of that, and the analysis that these teams put together, and the action plans to move that forward.
When is that going to be ready? When you say, is it June, July? Do you have a date?
Yes, we do.
Sorry, was I in here? Did I miss it?
We're shooting for May 9th.
Okay. Thank you.
In the years past, the principals would bring how their students are doing, you know, every one of them. They have different categories, and I remember Jackie's in particular, she had like five or six kids that were really struggling, working extra, and all this. Will we get that?
That was not the goal for this year that was put forward.
But we won't get that anywhere along the year?
It's not part of this goal. I mean, as far as that actual, those actual numbers, but we'd be happy to provide, you know, if the board is looking for that.
I don't know, I, that's up to the boss.
Well, we can talk.
Well, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, I'll answer two, but what you've seen in the past is still happening? So I think we shared with you, like, reading benchmark scores in the past, and how to showed you where all kids were, or we showed you an example of what we use. We just had data meetings in January, we went, we sat down and we did all of that. We look at the MAPS assessment, we look at the PALS. We do that three times a year. We're trying to create feedback loops that are a little bit more timely than just three times a year. But I would say the work that we're doing with the PLC professional learning community is far more all-encompassing than just looking at that data. If we had a data meeting and shared those results with you, you're going to see progress over time. Our district makes progress over time in MAP. This year, at the elementary level, we have new curriculum in reading, in writing, and in mathematics. We would expect an implementation dip. We're not seeing much of one, which is great. But, yeah, I mean, that's ongoing data that we continuously collect. What we're trying to do here is a tad more comprehensive than that, with the hope that it even more significantly impacts those numbers.
Well, that's really great to hear, because we switched math, right?
Right.
And somewhere along the line, we should have got a report, or maybe we are going to get that, how are we doing? You know? We, you know, we, we didn't know, we didn't know, you know, everyday math was with us for 20 years.
Right.
Now we put this new one in there, and I'm really glad to hear that, we haven't seen a dip, you know? But that'd be good information for us as well.
Yeah, we've had a year in.
Not quite.
Almost.
And that's the challenge that, you know, because one thing that we just met with for this week's admin team is, the end of the year is an absolute nightmare. The forward-examined fourth and eighth grade is seven and a half hours of testing for our fourth and eighth graders. For everyone else, it's near six hours. Then you've got map assessments, you've got PALS assessments, dynamic learning maps, all stuffed into the end of the year. So, you know, part of our frustration is the testing fatigue that's brought on by the state's very aggressive timeline and untimely communication that's put us in a bind. So that was another reason why we said, no matter what the state throws at us, we need to have a process in place by which we can look at this data, make it meaningful to us, and then translate it into classroom instruction. And that's what the process has been aimed at.
But to Quinn's point, I kind of feel like there's still a void when we're not able to look at any student performance data at all. And I realize there's a challenge, and we've had some discussions about how low should the board go, should we be looking at building levels? Or not? But I kind of feel like we've maybe swung too far the other way, where we don't have any. And I, I like, I know you do great work, but for me to go out in the public and say, we're doing great work, but I don't look at any data, is really a tough, that's tough for me. I would like to be able to say, we implemented a new math program, and now we're going to look at those results, and the reason we're implementing a new math program is, we weren't happy with our results before, you know? I mean, I think that there's got to be a movement toward some data for the board to[1609.08] I mean, I think that there's got to be a movement toward some data for the board to understand how. I mean, does anyone else feel that way? Like there's a gap between student performance and this internal stuff that I know has to happen, which is what we're working on.
You have said, just said, you know, communications and the timing, the state is, doesn't know what they're doing. And it's pushing back on us, or on you.
Right.
Not us, but you.
We don't, we don't have the data, that's the problem. We don't, we don't have the data. Last year we took the Badger, but it was a prototype and it only tested half of it. So that data is useless, so useless that the state voted to not even make report cards with it. This year's forward test doesn't happen until after spring break. And that's being aggressive to make it fit. It's actually a window that starts the Monday of spring break and runs all the way through the end of May. What that tells me is we're not going to even see those results.
Until next year.
Until the summer, if we're lucky, which is late summer. ACT was supposed to last year come out within three weeks of the end of testing. I don't think Jackie got any of the ACT results, even the generic ones, the general ones, until October of this year. And then the individualized student reports didn't come out until December. So we've been behind the eight ball as far as bringing to you any type of standardized test data because we don't have, we don't have anything that's consistent.
And I miss that, I miss having something.
So, you know, we could gladly bring the stuff that we're doing during the, during the year, you know, whether it's MAP assessment, which is what we did before, the RIT scores and stuff. But again, what we talked about was our focus needs to be the culture, which is, which is up there as part of, part of the board's strategy and we wanted to focus on that. So that stuff is still going on, if the board wants that, I'm sure they could ask for a report on that. We'd be happy to put that together.
You know, when we look at our MAP data, we consistently outperform the national level. We make about X number of points gained per year. We could set that as a goal every year, we basically hit that every single year. We wanted to make a greater impact in our MAP data and some of our state data than what we've had in the past, which is why we went to a new curriculum. We would expect a little bit of an implementation dip. We would expect that as kids are in the curriculum longer, year after year after year, and the teachers are more familiar, that they're going to continue to get better at that, the kids are going to continue to perform better. So we would expect to see that. I guess what I was trying to say is that yes, we have the data, we can show you the data. The goal this year was to really work on the system. But the data's there to look at any time.
I think it's really cool, when I toured your building using you as an example, you had just had a data meeting and I could see, you showed me, you took the names off and showed me where the yellows are and the greens are and how they're moving. These are the kids we're watching and we're trying to move them from whatever to whatever. I really do thoroughly enjoy seeing that once in a while. I understand this year we're not going to see some of that, but we'll, we can talk later about that if we want to ever do any kind of a data update. Otherwise, we appreciate the goals. Oh, John Jones has some comments and then we'll.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I mean, I appreciate what these guys are talking about with the, being kind of a pressured timeline for, or behind timeline for getting results back from testing and that kind of stuff. I agree with what Luanne's saying, but, you know, we get stuff brought to us with recommendations. We approve these things, we need to see, you know, the feedback on it. And the kind of feedback it seems would be some sort of a data. I kind of like the, looking at the MAPS or as results, if that's some kind of feedback. But I do think that we need, we need to get that, the feedback, some snapshot of the data to have an idea of what's going on. Because you guys, you all have that in your, in the data meetings you have, but we don't get to go to those things. So we could benefit from seeing some data to know that the decisions we're making based on your recommendations aren't going in the right direction. And Tony, do we see the timeline improving at all in the next year or two on when we get testing results?
They tell us it is. So.
Okay, well, thanks very much, guys, I appreciate it.
If we get a good superintendent in there, we'll be, we'll be all set.
Yeah, all right. Any other questions on the testing? I mean, doesn't, goals.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Tony. Next up, we have a school fees. Doug and, Doug and I, there were several items that came out of financing facility and this was one. Doug, I'll let you take it away.
Well, I don't have a great deal more to say than what I had in the board packet. We're not at this point recommending any increase in fees primarily because if we go through and look at the averages that were on this survey conducted by the Hamilton School District, we're very close and in several cases higher than the number of the districts that are on this list with our current fees. And the thing that's hard to compare about the final two columns there, there are districts from ranging from, for parking fees, for example, Mequon-Thievesville, $300 a year, to other districts charge nothing for student parking.
I like that district.
So, as I said, we're, at the present time, we're not recommending any increases in any of the fees.
All right, does anyone have any comments or questions on that?
What about lowering them?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
I'm not lowering them. Was there any discussion about that?
We're either right with everybody or high in some instances.
Yeah, oh yes, we are.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, then we will move to new business, discuss and take action on parent and student handbooks. This item, you want to explain why this came up? Okay, faster than normal and they want this approved tonight?
Yes, please.
Possible?
So, reason this is coming to you now instead of June or July when it normally does is that one of the things I was tasked with by the administrative team was going through our registration process. And we've had some parents come in and tell us and say, hey, that's a really thick packet you send out every year that we have to fill out and it's a lot of redundant information. And even our secretaries were saying the same thing. We have a lot of forms that seem to cover a lot of the same information. We probably need to look at this and we haven't had anybody take ownership of it for several years. And it was time to do that. So a thank you to Kathy for being our go-between, between us and the attorneys at WASB. So we're using their guidance in this and that's what's being brought to you tonight. And basically what we did is we sent them our stuff from last year. And they said, yeah, you got some forms in here that you don't need anymore, so let's just toss those out. And then some of the other information, and that's why the handbooks are coming to you, is what they called common practice. So things like the technology releases and the media form and the privacy statements are considered now common societal practices. We don't need a sign-off form anymore. That was their hands-down blanket, get this out of there, do what most districts do, move it into your student handbooks, put it there, you're still giving our families the statement of information, but you don't need separate waivers on all that stuff anymore. And so our goal was to try to simplify and streamline. And so we did that and did what they recommended. But the problem becomes is our handbooks then need to be released with the rest of our registration information, which needs to go out in early February every year. So we're a couple of weeks behind because that took us by surprise. And so what we're asking is that this becomes an annual January event from now on, that we are looking at the handbooks for the following year. The board is reviewing them and okaying them. And then they're ready to go out with all the registration materials in early February. For this year, all the handbooks with the exception of the middle school, didn't change with the exception of the three statements of information that WASB asked us to put in there and that you guys got those. And again, that's the media, internet, and privacy statement that went in there. The only one that did change because it needed some major revisions and Lynn Leroy went through it with Brian Bourner, it was the middle school one. They wanted to clean that up a lot. And so they modeled that after the other handbooks. You notice they'll look very similar visually and that kind of stuff and a lot of statements are exactly the same. So that got cleaned up. The other ones didn't get changed other than to add that information off of those forms we're getting rid of.
So there's one signature.
At the end.
At the end, which is a blanket signature.
Correct.
For our, for the content to the handbook policies, everything.
That's exactly it.
And yet, I just, I saw this the other night and I looked at it again, that's the one page that's missing from all the handbooks.
Is the sign-off statement?
Uh-huh.
Want me to pull one up real quick?
Not one handbook has the sign-off page in it.
Because they're separate, because when we do them in the registration packets, they go out as a separate piece. I can pop one up for you real quick if you guys want to see one.
Same.
All it says is, hey, we read and understand all the information in here.
There actually are a couple of changes in the high school book. One is just a statement around dance tickets, just to clarify to students and parents that they are told in advance, it's been done for probably seven years. But it wasn't included in the handbook. And there's, we tweaked the language a little bit around the partnership with the school research officer, just to be clear about the partnership there.
While you're waiting for Eric to power that up, I would challenge anybody to think of a time when Eric did a presentation that he didn't have a three-piece suit on.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, so there's the form.
Um, I know it's kind of tiny. Yeah, well, I'm trying to get the whole thing at once. This is the high school one, basically student name, grade level, student initials and signature. Up top there, and as we come down, then it's the same thing for the parents, their initials and signature. And they're done. On the elementary ones, there's no student signature, obviously, it's just a parent sign-off. They all look identical.
We haven't changed this form.
This is very similar to last year where we, WASB recommended the just initial pieces on here. Their attorneys took a look at that quick when I sent that to them. That was it.
Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, Nancy, go ahead.
What, what three things were added to that?
What three things were added?
Technology acceptable use, policy slash internet access, that's one. Technology website dash media use, that's one, what's the third one?
It's a confidentiality.
What were the three things?
The three initial bullet points. What are they, that you need to?
That were added to the handbook.
What are they?
So it's the basically internet network use piece, media release, photos, using images, that kind of stuff. And a privacy statement that was actually part of that. And that came out, you guys just redid that policy with Dave Cody right before he left. So we sent them that new language and they're like, oh yeah, put that into the handbook as well.
Okay. So are these all paper copies that get sent out?
It's PDF, electronic unless a family requests one by paper.
Okay, so it is PDF, okay.
So this all goes, we have a registration site where they download this information every year. That's not changing, it's just what we put on that registration site.
Very good.
Handbooks have to be part of that now. In the past, it was, we have all the registration forms, but the handbooks would go out later in the year.
I see you, Jim.
I will, oh, one thing that is in the handbooks right now, because it's early before the board has reviewed some stuff, we did put for like school fees, we just put to be determined.
Right. Yep, I saw that.
Obviously, that's a discussion. Food services is always determined, you know, when they have that final say on there, we don't have much of a choice in that one. And state, state immunizations as well. And so that we will plug in, you know, when those, when those are finalized.
Okay, very good, John.
So those, those three additions, you added them kind of pretty much word for word in all of the handbooks?
They're identical in each of the handbooks, yes.
What was the one thing in the full handbook that you said changed?
What was the one thing in the middle school handbook that changed?
The middle school's changed quite a bit. Before, it was just a listing of board policies before and wasn't real. Parent friendly, Lynn, you want to talk about that, sorry to put you on the spot at all.
Well, he's not going to be able to hear you.
It wasn't real parent friendly.
Do you want to come up here, Lynn, I'm sorry?
Yeah, it wasn't, not only was it not parent friendly, it was not student friendly and it just wasn't friendly when you went to open what would be a user-friendly document, you opened it up and basically found board policies just copied and pasted into the contents of the handbook. And then that was interspersed with some, I understand, that my child has read and it didn't make much sense. It looked like it was just a real fast cut and paste job. So if you went to look at it, it's nothing you would have a conversation over with a parent or a student. I mean, you wouldn't be able to pull this out and say, here's what we're living by because they would look at you and say, I don't understand what that means. So we just basically took the policies, made the reference to the policies and just made it more user-friendly as far as just everyday language that everyone's going to understand. So now it looks a lot like the other handbooks does, do.
All right, thank you, Lynn.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
And we're just asking, so we just came quick for board approval so we can get all of our registration materials out the door and out to our public and that kind of stuff. And then, as I said, next year, we'll kind of get in this cycle and bring it to the board in early January.
All right. If there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the parent-student handbook.
I'll set the motion.
Motion seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Next up, we would have comments from the school board regarding items for future consideration. Do we have any items?
Yes, is the, is it on the list to bring before the board to remove the early retirement language from the employee handbook?
I think that is, is personnel going to take that up first?
It was a recommendation.
We discussed that, yeah, it was a recommendation from personnel, so. I guess we could write that up as a recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay, so put that as a future? All right, any other ones? Seeing none, then board member announcements? Does anyone have any announcements or comments?
The musical, the musical, the musical is well underway, so performances are coming up, second week of March. Tickets are now available, please, come one, come all, come see all the hard work the kids are doing.
When is it?
Second week of March, so.
March ninth is the senior evening with dinner, so that's the Wednesday night. And then the shows open to the public on March 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th. So, and the tickets for the senior dinner are available at the district office at $6 apiece. We have about 50 tickets left, we've sold over 300 already.
Yay.
And the tickets for the regular shows on that Thursday through Sunday are available through the, I think it's like buy your own seat website and it, those links are available on the high school website and on the district website.
But they aren't $6 for you.
No, those are not $6.
It's all getting off cheap this year.
No, those are not $6.
And it's still the traditional evening shows for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday and the matinee on Sunday, so.
All right. I, any other, if not, I want to mention that there's a survey that people can fill out. We've set aside some focus groups as well to get your feedback on the superintendent search that we're in the middle of conducting. So if you're not sure, you can call Kathy or go to our website. There's a link, if you don't have time to come to a focus group, you can certainly give us your feedback online. So we would appreciate everyone participating in that and helping us to select a leader that matches the culture in this district and community. So I just wanted to mention that as well. And that won't be this week, but they start next week, correct? A week from tonight?
Yes, Monday, February 29th is our first, they're two in the evening.
Two in the evening.
And then March 3rd, that Thursday, we have some during the day. And then Saturday, March 5th, we have a parent community one available in.
On Saturday, okay, so thank you, we appreciate your feedback on that.